All right, I've got seven o'clock and I'll call the meeting to order. Thank you everyone for coming. First off, a couple of ground rules. You guys have heard them all. Silence your cell phones. Mute yourself if you're not talking. Don't talk. Don't talk over anyone else. That being said, let me get a quick roll call. I'll start with ten commission members. Alex, you're here.
Here.
Tim?
Here.
Andy?
Here.
John?
Here.
And alternate Tony?
Here.
All right, thank you. Who do we have here for Butter Creek?
John, you have to unmute yourself. It's the microphone at the bottom middle.
Thank you, no problem. John Van Louvene from East Burn and Gray representing Mr. Snyder. And Mr. Snyder's on? I believe so.
Yeah, I'm here. And I think Ken Justice is trying to get on too.
Okay.
He was having a little bit of trouble, I think, but.
He's gone on. He's on. All right, thank you. Okay, how about Green Top? Who we have from Lapeo?
Good, Jeremy.
Jeremy Huglen from the Crossroads Group, we're the engineer and surveyor, and Mike Madzak from Sal Lapeo Homes is with us.
Okay. All right. That being said, I'm gonna go on with the agenda here. First item, agenda item is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting. Anyone have any input on the minutes?
This is Alex. I do not.
All right, hearing none, I'd look for a motion to approve the minutes.
This is Andy. I'll make a motion.
Alex, I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Our first applicant tonight is Butter Creek Builders. Either John or Mr. Snyder, you want to take the lead here?
I'll start off if we, if I might. I think all of you are familiar with this property. I don't know how many sketch plans that I've presented to you, and Mr. Snyder has probably presented a few more. This one is much simplified from the previous versions that you've reviewed. All of the zoning issues, I think, that were implicated by past versions, all of which involved the construction of roads, and we had issues like secondary access, all of that type of thing. In this version of the plan, or in this new plan, Mr. Snyder and his engineer have managed, and we believe, to eliminate all of those zoning concerns. We have a review of the Wynn Associates March three, two thousand twenty-two letter, and note that there are no zoning issues suggested by that letter. There are obviously engineering issues that will need to be addressed when the fully engineered preliminary plans are submitted for review. But from our perspective, we're satisfied. I talked to Steve Powell this afternoon regarding his letter, just to confirm that he didn't see any zoning issues with this plan. So we're here to listen to any comments that you may have, but the intent is to proceed with this plan, to turn it into a preliminary plan, submit it for a formal review. But we're happy to hear your comments, if any.
All right, thank you. I mean, if you don't mind, let's just go down the letter.
That's fine.
You know, the first issue is with the, with the lane lots and the widths and further subdivision of those lots. I mean.
We agree that the ordinance is clear, and those two lots would be restricted from further subdivision.
Okay. Item two is, I mean, you can't access off of Butter Creek Road, correct, without a bridge?
That's right, but you know, we're not precluding the potential for future subdivision, nor are we required to by the ordinance, but you're correct, that we take, take a bridge in order to, for further develop either of those lots.
Right, okay.
And that's correct.
Item three, I think, is a mistake because I found.
There is a, there is a typical unit along the plan. There's a driveway and a typical unit, or typical house layout up close to Camp Rock Hill Road, so I agree with you. I didn't see that being applicable.
And this is Kurt. I did confirm that with Steve, that he, I believe the word "no" should not have been in there.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Now, we understand, obviously, that we have a lot of engineering work to do to delineate the natural resources and the flood plains and wetlands, all those sorts of issues. And they will all be addressed at preliminary plan stage, but from this, the primary purpose of this sketch plan was to identify, or to be, or to say differently, to confirm that we managed to address these zoning issues that were of primary importance in the previous sketch plan reviews.
Gotcha. I mean.
Again, number five is essentially just a comment that we're going to have to provide adequate information to verify that the net minimum lot area is met for either lot, but again, that's just strictly a statement of what the zoning ordinance requires, and we acknowledge that's, that's our burden.
All right, so number six is a lot line situation.
And again, we either, we, you know, those are always somewhat, in my view, somewhat subjective, but again, the ordinance says what it says, and we'll have to do the best we can, and at that point, we can request a waiver if we, if the township engineer or the planning commission believes that what we show on the preliminary plan is not conformative with the requirements of the ordinance, but again, that's something that we recognize. It's essentially a statement directly out of the subdivision and land development ordinance.
Certainly. Well, let me defer to my other planning commission members. Does anyone have any comment or concerns on, on any of the items that we've touched on so far?
John, I don't.
Tim, so far, no.
None for me, Alex.
Andy also, no.
So this would be the first item that you'd be looking for a waiver on?
Probably yes. I said, a lot of ordinances in this county have that comment, and I'm not quite sure what the public health, safety, or welfare issue is with respect to the comment, but nevertheless, I agree with you. We'll probably submit a waiver request.
This is Alex. I'm sorry, one quick question. Is there a reason you couldn't just extend the lot line from lot two down to the property line? It wouldn't be quite square, but is it a need for frontage on lot three?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
And it looks like the frontage on lot one, is that being used for that as well or no? No, lot one goes on the opposite street.
Correct, yeah. Yeah. I said, we'll take a look at that, but I, probably it'll be, oh, it's a middle way or without prejudice. All right. Street lighting, we don't really have a street here, so I guess the question is, do you want Camp Rock Hill Road lit up with streetlights?
I, I don't think we do, but what we've been typically asking in recent developments, recent projects, is for the lamp posts at the end of the driveways.
I think we had discussed that the last time we had a plan submission. I don't think, Tim, that's not an issue with you, is it?
Well, no, we were thinking, because the, it's such a long run from where the house would be up to at the end of the driveway. Either putting one, one light at the end of the driveway on, there's telephone poles on either side of the proposed driveway, or if we had to do individual lamp posts, doing those, putting like a solar battery up top there. So we're not running thousands of feet of wire up to the end of the driveway there, because there's some long runs.
Tim, what's your preference there?
I'm representing.
I think what Ken said, I don't know that it makes sense to run something, what are we calling that, thousands of feet of wire for a couple of lights that literally, if they don't change the bulbs, then what good are the lights? So I don't know if solar works. I don't know what the requirements are. I also haven't talked to the neighbors to see whether they even want lights out there. We are in a rural area. So I don't, you know, me personally, I could say I don't want a light out there. There is no lights anywhere else on the road. No lights even at Allentown and Camp Rock Hill, so it doesn't make sense. That's something I guess we have to discuss, but I think solar would make the most sense, as Ken did bring up.
Yeah, and again, you can ask for a waiver, Tim, at preliminary plan, if that's what you decide, but.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, from a, from a safety consideration, we, we would probably want to see something out there.
Understood. I think what you have, what, four driveways out there at this point, right? So, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so lot four would, that would be a simpler application there than, than the rest of them.
Right, right. Okay, riparian buffer, again, we need to identify that. That's pretty straightforward. That's number eight and number nine. Dedication of recreation or contribution, that's again, that's a comment, not a plan-related item. And frankly, I think that's the case with the rest of these, these comments. I don't think they're planning comments as much as they are just comments to keep in mind when we design the preliminary plan.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree.
Comment seven was skipped over with the sewage facilities planning module.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, Kurt, you're right. I mean, obviously, I'm not sure the, it's a different plan. We either need it or we don't need it. I suspect that we're going to need it, but I'm not sure. We'll have to check with DEP on that. What's your opinion, Kurt?
Some of the testing, I believe, was done a while back, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think DEP would need to be contacted to make sure the, the old testing's adequate. There, there are quite a few sites shown on the plan, so I would think you would have enough sites here, but ultimately, that'll go to DEP.
The goal is to have a minimum two on each light, and we have that for sure, and some have more than that.
Some more than that, that's right.
All the testing has been recently reviewed by the county health department, so I can't see, and, and they have approved everything as far as verbally.
If the county is willing to accept the testing, I think that's not a problem. I think with the limited number of lots, you know, normally, I think component one, but I believe this is part of a larger subdivision, so I think you're going to be looking at a component two on this.
Why would this be part of a larger subdivision? Are you talking about the old subdivision?
Right, if that occurred before seventy-two, I think, then you would have more than ten lots in the overall subdivision, which would require a planning module for the entire, for these lots.
Okay.
But again, that's, that's a simple matter of checking and seeing what's going to be required and, and complying. Again, I don't, I don't expect it to be a problem.
Generally, I believe our goal here is, just like before, to, if we have a sketch plan that everybody's okay with, then we feel more comfortable to go ahead to preliminary design, but we haven't really gotten past this step yet with your board, so we're trying to come up with a plan that, that your board feels comfortable with, so then we can move on to the preliminary design.
Understood. So again, I'll kick it back to the planning commission members. Any, any comments or concerns?
This is Alex. I don't really have a concern. I'm just wondering, would there be any merit to doing a five hundred or six hundred foot cul-de-sac ending pretty much about where lot, what is that, lot four driveway starts to bend off? And then just run all of the driveways off the cul-de-sac?
No way of doing that without making lane lots then. That would force lane lots, and you can't have lane lots off a new road.
Okay, good enough.
I mean, that's the reason, obviously, otherwise it probably does make sense, but.
Actually, in the rural area that we are, this is actually nicer, because if you live on a back road, you probably understand that that invites a short road like that, that, that's not used a great, a great amount, invites some issues. So having independent driveways makes it, makes it safer, in my opinion.
I think with this number of lots, that makes sense too, you know.
Anyone else?
This, this is Andy. Just a question for clarification. On the driveways there, is there a, a section of grass in between the, the driveways there? I see eighty feet wide. Could you clarify what, what, what the intent is there, what, what that looks like?
Are you able to zoom in that area? Because there's a three-foot gap between each driveway.
Is that what it is, three feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, you have eighty feet of width, you have four driveways, ten foot wide, so you've got, you know, forty, around eighty feet of width, so some of them have far more than three feet, and some are, you know, down to closer.
Oh, that's right, Tim, you're right. The, the two outside ones have the three feet, and then the middle one is just, I think, a one-foot strip that we were going to stone. I mean, we could, we could put something in there, but we don't want it to grow too big, or like, I don't want to put any bushes in there that could start to overgrow and narrow down the driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I don't necessarily have an opinion on that yet, just looking. Thank you, thank you for the clarification.
This is.
Go ahead, Tim, I'm sorry.
I just said, I don't, I don't have anything okay with it.
This is Kurt with township engineers office again. I just want to give one, point out one thing for those driveways. You'll have to be mindful when you're doing stormwater management, because we're, we have all those, all that paved area directed towards the roadway. You'll have to come up with some innovative solution on that.
Towards which roadway?
Where they all access Camp Rock Hill Road.
That's, that's heading downhill from there, so it's all draining away from Camp Rock Hill Road.
Sorry, I'm looking at these. You're correct.
Yeah, the intent is to start to, there's actually natural swales and channels that are going to, everything's going to drain towards that stormwater.
On, on lot.
Yes.
Yes.
And then anything below that, there's, we'll, we'll capture that, because as you head further down the page, so to speak, towards the south, there's another big swell that carries everything from left to right, as you're looking at the plan.
Yes.
Right now, where we have the basin planned and designed is exactly where the stormwater runs right now. There's a, an area where it has carved out and ran exactly there, so that's why we put that location. That's why we put it in the location. Everything from above there runs down to that, to that spot at, at this time now.
Okay.
John, did you have anything?
No, I, I don't. No questions or comments.
Okay. All right, so I, I don't have any either. I mean, it's certainly a lot simpler than the last ones that we've seen. Doesn't seem to have any issues that you will not be able to get cleaned up. So what are, what are you looking for from us tonight, just to hear that comment?
To hear that comment, that's correct.
All right, well, then I would say, start cleaning things up, and we'll see you when you come back.
Very good. Great, thank you very much.
You got it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right, so moving forward, next on the agenda is a Green Top Road subdivision with Sal Lapeo Homes. I need to disclose that I've done business with Sal Lapeo Homes, so I am going to recuse myself from the discussion and any voting, so I'm going to pass the gavel on to the vice chairman, Alex Armour, if you're willing to take.
Thank you, Chris. Jeremy, did you have something to say to introduce this, or should we just move right into the letter?
No, I can, I can certainly introduce it if you want to. Again, my name's Jeremy Huglen from the Crossroads Group of the Engineering and Surveyor for the site, which, with us is Mike Madzak from Sal Lapeo Homes, who is the, the owner of record. Now, we had to note that he's equitable owner, but he is, they are the owner of record for the parcel now. I can give an overview of the site if you all want me to. We talked to you, I think, in November before, and I think the site's somewhat familiar with the township, kind of lingered around for a couple of years. But if you want me to go back through the history a little bit, I can. Otherwise, I'm happy to get into the review, if that pleases the planning commission.
Does anyone on the commission what, would like to hear a review, or wants to hear a review?
Is there anything significantly different from the last presentation?
No, as far as the overview of the, of the project, no, the, the lot configuration has remained the same. We did it, took the feedback from the planning commission in the prior engineer's review, and implemented quite a bit more information into the plan. But the overall concept is consistent with what we had in November.
Okay, then you don't have to repeat anything on my account.
Or mine.
Yeah, okay, I got the minute from November nine.
All righty, why don't we just move into the review of the letter then?
Okay. We did receive the Wynn Associates letter dated March second. I'll go through the key items here. A lot of it is will comply, so my intent is at least to hit on the items that we want the planning commission's input on, and then certainly come back to anything that the planning commission sees that maybe I glanced over. That's all right.
That's fine.
We had discussed in November a number of waivers. The first comment in the review letter is one of those waiver requests that we would like to ask of the township. It has to do with the lot line configuration, particularly for lots one and two, which are on the corner of Green Top Road and Catch Basin Road. Lot lines are supposed to come in perpendicular to the street. This is an angled lot line, really making use of the on-lot sewer testing, the locations that we could find. It was, it was limited, certainly on-site, so based on the locations that we were able to do testing, we had the depth of ground of, of subsoil, sort of dictated that skewed lot line between one and two.
Also, I can add to that, on, on my property here, I, my lot line is perpendicular to the road for about a hundred feet, then there's a pin, and then a lot line angles off from there. If you did something similar to that, then you wouldn't need a waiver or an exception.
I, yeah, I think we did discuss it at the last meeting, if I'm correct, about the, you know, is that, is the merit of that worthwhile? Is that, is that what the planning commission would like to see? I think we, we have more than enough. I'm just going to double check. As far as minimum lot area, I think lot one is, is slightly, slightly smaller of the two, but we're still at one point nine eight acres. We do have one we could come off at a straight shot. Four hundred feet or fifty feet, whatever the planning commission desires. I came away from the last meeting thinking that generally, this, this skewed angle is acceptable, so either way, we're asking a waiver right now. But if the planning commission would like to see something different, we're certainly open to that.
It was my understanding, this is Kurt again. My understanding, Steve Ballard from my office spoke to you, and I understood that there was going to be a plan coming back in to clean up some of these items. So I guess if you did, if you were planning on updating the plan, that could be an item that you could address and maybe pull off a waiver.
We do intend, we do intend to resubmit revised plans pretty quickly. If that's something that the planning division isn't happy with the configuration, we can make that adjustment.
What, what is the footage that you're looking for that would be parallel to the street? Hundred feet, fifty feet? Do we know that?
My first thought is that the, the bottom right corner of the replace, what I'm assuming is the replacement septic area, is really close to that lot line, so if you could drop that, bring that lot line in straight, maybe put a little more room between that and the, the property line, and then angle it back, I think that'd be beneficial in more ways than one.
Yeah, that would make sense.
So you'd be back, that's the end of the, the sand mound, is what you're saying, the secondary system?
Right.
It doesn't encroach, doesn't look like, Jeremy, am I wrong? Does it encroach on the seepage bed on one?
It does not. We would, we would be all right.
Be able to get it in there. I'm okay with doing that. If that's what, if that's what we need to do, we'll do that.
Yeah, and that's almost a hundred feet on the nose, just so, just so you know. That's just about a hundred feet on the nose. We could come off.
As long as, as long as we have the right size, I think we still, we're still maintaining lot one size, so we should be fine.
Yeah, we have a little extra room there. We can certainly do that. We can certainly do that.
Just prevent the need for a waiver, and like I said, I think it might make that septic system a little more viable.
Forgive me if I'm quiet for a second, I'm just taking notes as we go.
No problem. Okay.
All right, item number two. Talks about street improvements. We had, we had talked at length about this in November as well. The, kind of looking at the existing condition of the road, it was, what we took away from the meeting was, we're going to widen our half widths to the required fourteen foot, which is a, overall road width is twenty-eight foot, based on township ordinance, fourteen foot half width is the requirement. We were going to widen that along Green Top Road and Catch Basin Road across our entire frontage. There was also a little belly in Catch Basin Road that the township engineer had, had mentioned, I think the planning commission had mentioned, if we could, could fill that in a little bit, take that little belly out. That'd be a big help to the community. So we implemented both of those things into the revised plan that was submitted. However, we're still, we'd be asking waivers of curbing.
Jeremy, I guess there's a, one question. You're talking about widening that four feet for a shoulder, right? And Kurt, it was my understanding we were looking for the cart width to be increased to fourteen?
I think what Steve had mentioned is that the, the ordinance requires a cartway width of twenty-eight feet, I guess for the whole roads, it'd be half width of fourteen.
Yeah, and then it would be a shoulder beyond that, correct, Kurt?
Correct.
I believe what we talked about before was, I believe we talked about widening it to have a consistent fourteen-foot half width. We specifically said, don't make a four feet, because the road kind of undulates back and forth. Make sure it's fourteen foot as a solid half width. At the time, I thought the extra widening would be a shoulder. I did talk to Steve about it today. Said, well, we really like it to be paved for the entire fourteen-foot half width. We were happy to do that. I didn't, Kurt, please correct me if I'm wrong. I don't, I don't, I thought I heard you say the, the fourteen foot and then an additional shoulder beyond that.
The, the typical shadow ordinance detail, I believe, does require that. It's a shoulder in addition to the cartway width.
Okay, that, that I had missed, or glanced over before, so at the prior meeting, we talked about widening to a consistent fourteen feet.
Yeah, that, it is something that you could follow up with Steve on later, but that was my understanding that the ordinance does require that. If you wanted to propose something different, and the planning commission was okay with that, obviously, we'd like to hear your thoughts too on what you're looking to do.
Kurt, what is the typical shoulder width?
Three to four feet.
This is Tim. I would prefer to see the, the cart width, or the cartway widened to the fourteen feet, and then a shoulder.
Any other comment from the planning commission?
Yeah, this, this is John, and I think I mentioned this at a previous meeting. Both those roads up there are, I think, in. there are, I think, in parts woefully substandard. And I think, and this is direct to the township. I think what the township needs to do is come up with a plan to bring those roads up standard, or figure out what that standard's going to be for the ultimate buildout, and that this becomes a part of that plan, rather than kind of a pieces approach where, you know, we develop this, and then maybe sometime later come along and, and do something different with the rest of the roads. It would be nice if it was all part of one end-to-end, consistent-looking, nice road upgrade, as I said, and, and that this would just be a part of that plan, not something standalone.
Well, that was my point, John, with, you know, making it the standard cartway width paved, so that at least we're working towards that. I mean, that would be at a minimum. But yeah, I agree that the roads are, I was up there again today, just on my way home, and yeah, the roads up there are just terrible. So at a bare minimum, I would say widening the cartway to that 14 feet, and then the shoulder on top of that, trying to work towards what John's talking about.
I do, I do understand that, and the existing road is just between nine and a half and 10 and a half feet for the half widths. It's, it's pretty narrow, being back there myself. We are improving culverts at under the road. We, you know, we already agreed that was another component of it. We're trying to improve the runoff around the road right-of-way itself on both. This does sort of segue, I guess, with, with another waiver request that we had. So if I can roll these two together a little bit in this discussion about sidewalk and, and/or pedestrian path. That was another waiver request that we're going to ask, but it is kind of hand-in-hand with this. There's discussion, and if you can just give me a minute to get back to this in a second. There's discussion about taking a trail through the site. That's something that, we don't feel very strongly about taking a walking trail between houses, behind houses, you know, between sideyards, things like that. If the planning commission was willing, we could do some sort of walking path across the frontage within the, the right-of-way, the easement for the road. If we were to do that, I would like, if we were to do that, and this is kind of the segue, I would like to avoid putting a shoulder and beyond the cartway, and have a little bit more grass strip and buffer to the walking path. If that's something the planning commission would like to consider, it just gives a little more grass strip between the paved cartway and a walking area. We have about 12 feet to the right-of-way to work with, so I'd like to have as much buffers as I can.
Kurt, do you have any thoughts on that?
I think you could probably cut down a little bit on the shoulder, maybe not, maybe have two feet instead of three or four feet, to kind of allow the grass strip between that and the trail. That'll give you a little bit more spacing, the trail from the edge of the road.
I mean, our, our thoughts on that were, the trail goes to the back of the property. It goes to nowhere. So if we put it in, it goes through the property. I mean, I, I wouldn't want somebody walking through my backyard. If you put it out front along the roadway, if we put a stone, like a bike path, at least it'll get used by this residence, and whoever goes along that road, they're not out in the road, they're on that path. Yeah, it doesn't go to anywhere, but it doesn't go to anywhere the other way. It goes from woods to woods.
So I guess it's really two parts. Is the planning commission okay with the walking path with, or a bike trail being across the frontage, as opposed to through the interior of the site? That's, that's our first question.
Well, I think the point of that was to connect to the trail coming off the Huntsburger property, right?
Correct.
So I don't know what a bike trail along the frontage does.
It provides for future connections. I mean, I, I understand that, and we discussed that to the Huntsburger property in the rear, too, but being pragmatic about it, for future residents, we're trying to steer clear of having pedestrian walking paths through people's backyard.
This is John. I, I agree. I don't like the idea of having trails through people's backyard. My suggestion is sketch out a couple of the alternatives and, and present them. You, you can talk, and I can have a picture in my mind, but what I have in my mind might not be what you're referring to. So I think some more discussion accompanied by some rough sketch diagrams might be helped the discussion. But in general, I'm open to the idea of having it across the frontage rather than through backyards.
Let me ask the members a question. Would you rather see some kind of a, I don't know, gravel, even asphalt trail, or would you rather see sidewalks along the, the frontage of the property?
Yeah, this is Tim. I, I just, I, I agree. I, I wouldn't want the trail behind people's houses and all that. That's not what I'm getting at. My point is, the trail, you know, is off the Huntsburger property, so I don't see the advantage of, of, from a trail standpoint going across the frontage. Now, is there any way to bring that up the side of that driveway to Lot, what's that lot in the back corner there? Lot 4? Like, wherever that trail exits the Huntsburger property, would I be able to go up along the driveway, Lot 4, to come across the front?
We, we can look into that. We can look into that. I think about the, the liability of that one lot owner. That, you're, you're at least avoiding foot traffic behind your house, if we did.
Yeah, that, that was my point, kind of keep it off to the side of the edge of the property. But yeah, I, I hear you. I don't, I wouldn't want the trails behind the, behind the houses, either.
Did Tim ever find out, I, I was going to find out where, where exactly that came out of the Huntsburger property? Do we know that, Jeremy?
It looks like it, we, we poked around. It looks like it kind of dead ends a couple hundred feet off the property, but it looked like it was, it was the idea of a trail, wasn't ever fully established. But that's just looking at the aerial imagery and, and old plans. So if, I don't know if Greg or anybody on the planning commission is more familiar with it, I didn't see any evidence that there's a substantial trail back there.
Yeah, a quick discussion with Steve. He made it sound like it was a little bit to the, to the west of the flag coming off Lot 4.
Kurt, if they were to dedicate five or six feet of that to the township for the trail, is that something we've done before? Do you know? Like, instead of putting the owner, the onus on that flag lot property owner, could we, could we accept that property for the trail?
I think it's possible. I don't know if the township has done that, but another way to do it could also just be an easement.
Yeah, I think that's something that the township could be interested in, is just an easement, maybe not building the trail, but having an easement for 50 years down the road, if maybe something happens to connect. Just that option.
Right.
So if I understand, coming off of Catch Basin, really along that flag, right, for Lot 4, and basically providing a 10-foot wide easement, does it need just 10 K? Does it need to be 20 for that? I know 20 is usually standard, but that seems, that seems too large for a walking trail.
But it would probably be, we need a construction easement?
Oh, yeah.
And then, and then the actual easement.
Yeah, okay.
I can ask a question. It's Hal Schremer. I worked on the Park Yemen Trail. Again, we had a couple of those where we had like a 10-year, where they put together a 10-year option to open up an easement, and it would be this wide for just the gravel trail, plus another 10 feet on either side for construction easement, simply because you need to run a caterpillar down there in order to actually build the thing. But that does seem like a, does seem more in tune with the neighborhood to have some kind of, you know, just a gravel trail, or actually grit trail, like you have on the Delaware Canal, rather than one section of sidewalk sitting out in the middle of no other connections to sidewalk.
I'm, I'm fine with creating an easement. That's fine with me.
Yeah, Hal, that's kind of what I was getting at, is would we be okay with a trail running around the frontage of the property, as opposed to putting in sidewalks and curbs out there? I'm just wondering what the other planning commission members think about that possibility.
The only, the only other thing that I can think of is find out, and perhaps put in some kind of just waiting shed for the school bus. Because that's going to become the location for the school bus to drop off and pick up. So maybe just a little bump out for a school bus pickup.
Good point.
I think we, I think we can accommodate that. I think we can accommodate that. So I'm, I'm understanding an easement along the flag of Lot 4. Maybe, maybe it's a, an option for an easement, an option to be exercised in 10-year periods, something like that. And then do you still want anything across the frontage? I, I know, I know Alex had brought up sidewalk versus chipped trail. I prefer, I prefer it to be a chipped trail. I don't think sidewalk in this neighborhood really fits the aesthetics there, but that's, that's our, our opinion of it.
No, I agree with you, Jeremy. That's why I was asking for other comments.
If you place a loose material, it could become a maintenance issue for some of these township or property owners. If it, if it's a trail, usually paved surface is typically desired, but I'll let the planning commission speak on what they would prefer.
Yeah, I would say, I would say a paved trail versus some type of gravel or something like that. But certainly then, in addition to the full cart width widening, and then the trail. I don't, I agree, I don't think, you know, sidewalks out here make a whole lot of sense. But if you brought that easement up from Lot 4, you would then have somewhere to go with that, you know, for them to go.
And along the, along the frontage, correct? Because I think when I spoke to Steve, there, there is a trail network that you would have to access from the south, the furthest southeast section along Green Top. So I think the intent is to get down to that, the southeast corner.
Yeah, bring it all the way around the frontage on both roads.
Andy, any thoughts on that?
I mean, trails are high on the list on the comp plan. So yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that, I think, along the flag and then down around the front. And if you're saying that it connects in the southeast corner, then that seems to make sense to me.
And John, you're fine with a paved trail as opposed to a sidewalk?
Yes.
All righty, I, I think we're all good with that, then, Jeremy. If we get that easement along the, the flag, and then some kind of a trail along the front.
Okay. So do we settle on the shoulder, too? Is that, is that necessary? Is it on top of the cartway? Is that something we could forego?
I think, well, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I, I think the township would like to see probably at least a two-foot cartway there, Kurt? Or a two-foot shoulder?
I, I think, depending on what you're proposing for the trail, because sometimes with these trails, you end up building a wider stone base, so that the machine, when they're constructing it, can put down the, like, just say if the trails are going to be five feet wide, normally you make a stone base that's eight to 10 feet wide, so that you can access the paving machine with a truck. And then you could use that extra stone base as part of the shoulder.
So you're, you're saying almost expand the shoulder wider and just use that as the trail?
And then put a trail offset that from the road.
Okay.
I think from a constructability standpoint, that might serve both purposes.
Okay.
Jeremy, one quick question. Is that, does it, if we do the widening of the road, which I'm fine with, and then we do a two-foot shoulder, and then we do the, say, a five-foot wide blacktop path, does it put us out of the ultimate right-of-way? Does it put us on the lots, is what I'm getting at? So if it's on the lots, then who maintains that in the future?
So the, it would not-
In the right-of-way, is it then the township's, is what I'm, I'm just asking that question before we go draw it all that way, and then we get to that point, and then we don't know what we're doing when we get to that point?
For the majority of the frontage, it would still be within the right-of-way.
Okay.
However, we're Catch Basin and Green Top. We're, we're softening the curb between Catch Basin and Green Top. That was one of the comments last time. So we're widening the radius there. In that area, the walking trail would have to be within Lot 1. Or, or-
Or you could update the ultimate right-of-way line to give a little bit additional in that area.
We could. I could change the geometry there. It would be a little funky, it would be an extra.
Because you're already adjusting that lot, anyway?
With Lot 1, Lot 2, lot line adjustments?
Correct.
Yeah. I could, I could increase the radius of the right-of-way there and squeeze it in. That might be a good place. Well, that doesn't quite answer Mike's question, though, I guess. Who, ultimately, if it's in the right-of-way, is that the township's ownership of that?
You, you should be fine, because 14 feet plus two feet plus five feet, you're only at 21 feet. And I believe you're at, you're over 50 feet, ultimate right-of-way, correct?
Except at that one corner. But I can make that work. I can make that work.
Yeah, it's 52, I think, right?
It's 52, yeah.
I, I think the sidewalks would pretty much be the same, or the, the trail would pretty much be the same as sidewalks. Is that correct, Kurt?
Yeah, five feet would be the, the minimum paved trail width that I would suggest to go with, which you would do a five-feet-wide sidewalk. So you're the same width.
Right. But as far as maintenance?
Yeah, as, as far as maintenance on a rural, along a rural road, a paved trail should, should be fine.
Who would be responsible? Would that be the township? Would that be the homeowner?
This would be, it looks like it would be within the, it depends on how this plan is. If it's being dedicated, or is it going to be an easement on the homeowner's lot?
It's, it's an easement. It is what we were instructed, that you don't take right-of-way. It's just an easement, but that-
I can jump, I can jump in for a second. Normally, the person who benefits from the easement is responsible for taking care of it. So if it's a county trail or a township trail, then that's the person who's supposed to maintain it, whether it's an easement. If it's an easement, then it's on you to maintain it because you're working, you're using somebody else's property, and you're supposed to maintain. Although, a lot of times, the trails are just, okay, here's a dirt path. Sometimes you get a gravel path, sometimes you get a nice paved path.
Greg, how does the township view regular sidewalks? Whose responsibility is that for maintenance?
For regular sidewalks, I believe it is the property owner.
Right.
You can, you can petition them to maintain that. But that's ultimately up to the Board of Supervisors. So why the township people benefit from the sidewalks, it's the, they'd have to maintain them, shovel them, take care of them. So the ultimate decision probably would come from the board, who would maintain them.
Is there a township ordinance on maintaining sidewalks?
As far as shoveling, no, not yet.
Oh, okay.
If people don't shovel it in a certain amount of time, they give a friendly call or email from the, from me. But there is no one.
So there is, there's at least a, an expectation on your part that people are shoveling sidewalks?
Absolutely. If we get complaints for school routes and people waiting for the buses, if it doesn't get shoveled within a couple of days, they'll either get a letter, email, or phone call from the township manager requesting them to clear their sidewalks.
Right. So, I mean, the township's not out there shoveling sidewalks. I wouldn't expect the township to be out there shoveling walking paths so that children can get to the bus stop.
That is correct. Right.
Right. So, Michael, to answer your question, I think, even though it wouldn't necessarily be curb and sidewalk, I think we, the planning commission at least, would view this pretty much as the same as a sidewalk.
Okay.
Just a quick question, Kurt. What is the definition of a non-residential street? It's in Section 506 of Zaldo. Do you know that?
I, I don't have the ordinance in front of me right now.
Well, it just says the non-residential street, so it's 5, Section 506, 4C, says non-residential streets, non-residential streets have a minimum right-of-way width of 58 feet, minimum cartway width should be 34 feet. So just curious what a non-residential street was. I mean, would that potentially factor in here? Is that what we're talking about, or does anybody have any idea what that means?
I think that means it would pertain to a commercial site, where you have larger-
I'm guessing that might be like an industrial park or something along those lines.
Yeah, I just wasn't quite sure if we're talking about like in town or something like that versus rural or what have you. It would make sense. It's commercial, but. Just wanna make sure we weren't running into that fifty eight foot uh right of way versus the fifty two foot.
Made me panic. I had to pull up the ordinance while we're talking. I think we're a local access road. Steven commented to make it fifty two before, so we have a fifty foot, fifty two foot right of way. And we consider a local access.
Okay.
I think that's fitting for this area. It's, it's not high, high volume, but.
Yeah, I, I would not consider this a non-residential street.
Okay, I was just trying to get the definition of it. That's.
Any other comments or questions regarding the trail or the frontage or sidewalks versus trail or any of that? Hearing none, I'd suggest we move on.
Yeah, I'll try and keep this. I mean, those are the two biggest things. There are a couple of waiver requests that I'd like to ask the planning commission about. Um if I can, I'm just gonna go off of, I, I just had sent um Mr. Lippincott late in the day waiver request letter, so. I'll try and, and go through these pretty quickly. I won't quote the section unless you guys want me to. Um there's a section in the Zaldo that requires we put concrete monuments at every property corner. I'd like to ask a waiver that we put concrete monuments along the frontage only and use pins everywhere else. It's really, a couple of things. This is a rocky area. And there, there's stipulations in the ordinance when you hit bedrock, but this is a rocky area. It's always a hard time with our test locations. Pins are a lot easier and I'm not worried about uh. Outside agents coming and tinkering with, with property corners nearly as much as if we're in a full blown residential development. Is that something the planning commission would consider to give us a partial waiver and allow us to do pins on the in, interior of the lot?
I'm gonna defer to Kurt on that and he may not know if that's something we've waived in the past.
I, I, thanks Alex. I did speak to Steve. Uh he said that historically. The township has required concrete monuments uh everywhere and they have not granted waivers from that requirement.
Yeah, the board of supervisors haven't waived that requirement either.
So, okay, I may still ask because my back is asking me to ask you guys.
I'm sympathetic there Jeremy. Like I said, I just didn't think it had been done before, so.
It is, it is a pretty common ask. I'm surprised, I'm surprised, but you know, it is what it is. That's the requirement there. So I thought it's worthwhile to at least ask about that. That's landscape plantings for storm.
To a rock.
I'm sorry.
And then do a big rock.
Yeah. The, the next section is in the stormwater management ordinance. There's landscape plantings for basins. Uh there's a couple, I listed a couple key components here, but basically what it is, the ordinance requires we plant. About ten trees for, for every hundred feet of perimeter of the basin. Our stormwater basins, uh we did all of our infiltration testing. We actually have plans into DEP. I believe we already. Uh we have our admin comments that we addressed and have back in the Bucks County Conservation District. Because we didn't get good infiltration testing, we're doing plantings uh for each one of these stormwater facilities. I call them BMPs. They're not really a. Quite a conventional basin like what you're used to seeing. We'd like to ask a partial waiver to at least count those plantings towards that. The second part, which I didn't list in the waiver request letters, we're in a heavily wooded area. I don't know that there's a need to visually buffer. These basins anymore than what we're gonna do because the woods that we're protecting and, and then supplemented by the BMP plantings we're required to put in. Um for the, the DEP rates.
Kurt, what are your thoughts on that uh using the, the BMP plantings as part of the. Required plantings?
I, I don't think Steve objected to that, uh but he did suggest possibly a fee in lieu of the difference. Like if you're. Give us a tabulation of what you would have been required to put in and what you're actually putting in and what the difference would be.
We can do that. I, I don't wanna say what the difference is now because we're still going through a review with DEP. In, in effect, it could change a little bit by a three or two in each one, but once, once we get through that, we can put together a table like that.
Okay.
Do any planning commission members have an issue with that?
John, I don't.
This is Tim. I, I don't, but like are we, where are we on this letter now? Are we going down still through the numbers or? Kinda jump around here.
To be fair, I abandoned that after we talked about the road improvements and the, and the trails. So. I'm just bouncing to the couple items that I was, had waiver questions on and the rest of it gentleman is will comply really. The entirety of the rest of the review outside of the waiver requests is will comply. So I can certainly pick back up and, and go back through item by item. If you prefer.
Well, like where was that? Like what, what item was that you were just talking about with the, the tree planting? Was that seven?
This was actually based on a waiver request that just came in today, I believe.
It is, and it's also under comment number ten, letter K.
Okay.
I'm fine with you uh moving ahead Jeremy, just going through the waiver request, but if you could just reference where in the letter that was commented on so everyone can. Follow along.
No problem. I apologize. Is it okay to move to the next one?
Any other comments on the in lieu of for the uh basin plantings?
That, that was ten J, right Jeremy?
Yes, ten J, ten J.
Ten J.
Alright, just move on then. Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, just going back to like uh item ten, like ten A, um about the infiltration study. And it says stormwater infiltration does not appear feasible on the site. Um then ten C appears a post-development rate runoff exceeds pre-development rates and shed one for all storm frequencies is greater than five years. Or five years or above. Then not, notwithstanding the combined shed ones, shed two rates do not exceed the pre-development rates, but I, I. Have they been addressed? I mean, where?
We are addressing that. So let me go back in order. So the infiltration, we have poor infiltration out there. And that's one of the reasons we're doing BMPs that in, that integrates the plantings to get uh trans evaporation. Through DEP's manual. That's what we're using to manage water volume for them. Uh we also are using amended soils and doing different things to, to mitigate the poor infiltration testing that we had. So we are working on that. That is going back into the, to your engineer in a couple of days here to clarify it and clean that comment up.
Okay.
Comment number, comment, go ahead. I was gonna hit number C then.
Well, I was just gonna say the BMPs you're talking about, like so on the plan, it's kinda tough to see here because it's so small what we're looking at. So are these the shaded areas that are around the? Backsides there or what?
If we go um.
One oh three, one dot oh three. Is that what we're looking at there? The BMP, is that what they are?
Correct, one oh three.
Okay, so and these are like, these are kinda like small, like uh drainage basins that are more like a channel. Is that correct?
So each one is a sump area. They're between two and three feet deep, top to bottom. Um what we did is try and design so that each lot can be built independently. Each lot is, it is completely self-sustaining for stormwater management.
Yeah, so that's the same thing that we had in the Ridge Valley Development. Is that not correct Alex? The Ridge Valley Road?
Yeah, I believe so.
That we're having issues, that we're having issues with right now, I believe. Where they're not draining.
Are you familiar with that Greg?
I'm familiar with the driveways out there. Quite familiar with the driveways out there.
Well, the driveways are an issue too. That's one, but two, the, the drainage, they, these BMPs, the, the house directly across the street from mine. Has one right in front of the house and it's now a pond. So it doesn't drain. I know that homeowners aren't happy with it. Um. We had talked about it at a previous meeting, I think back in December, just briefly as, as comment after, kinda after the. Uh body of the meeting, but I personally, I'm not a big fan of those things that that's what that is because. That becomes, I mean, in the summertime, it's a mosquito trap. It's, they don't drain. I mean, I, I don't know. What there is to do to make sure that they drain. Uh what is like, how does that work? I mean, the soil's not good around here. That's like you said, it infiltrate. Infiltration testing is not good, so.
Are you using some of the, the managed release concept from the MPDS permit requirements with an under drain or like a slope? Like some kind of de-watering.
So that, so we're doing amended soils. We're doing plantings. We can do, yeah. We are doing the managed release concept without actually calling it that because DEP has different parameters when, when you apply that through, but. We're, we're getting the same job done with amended soils and plantings.
Yeah, I, I would just like, I'd like to see a little more on that because supposedly that's what the other engineer did at this other site and it didn't work, so.
I would, I would, it is, yeah. The requirements by the state especially are there, when you have bad infiltration, there's, it's just a broad brush requirement. And you have to meet the standards and do what you have to do. So we can do under drains, we can do gate valves if, if. Kurt, if you and Steve are okay with that, we can have an under drain system with a gate valve that is intended to be closed. Um the reality is, and just so everybody knows is, you have to design it that it'll be closed, but I can't stop a homeowner from opening that up whenever he wants. And then it drains out and doesn't, doesn't give any groundwater recharge the way it's supposed to, but. That's the MRC. That's really what, what you were talking about Kurt, I think, with the MRC process with the DEP man.
Some of them have an up, upturn ninety within the, the outlet box that you could use instead of a valve that, that's easy to disable, but. I mean, I guess there, the, the principle of the matter is there needs to be some kind of way to de-water these facilities. They don't turn into stagnant ponds.
Yeah, you can, you can integrate that.
Yeah, and that's, that's what the ones on Ridge Valley Road are. They're stagnant ponds and I'm fairly confident the homeowners, people that bought these properties. Are not happy with the situation and uh, you know, they just kinda. Something to take a look at to prevent it from happening in another development.
Yeah, that, and that's fairly easy to integrate that in. To, to add that in is, is pretty straightforward. So we can add that in as part of the next uh submission back.
Okay.
Uh comment number C you hit on too about pre and post and how, I'm sorry, did I cut somebody off?
No, that's alright. Uh one quick question. I heard talking about evapotranspiration, so. Uh I know that your average willow tree, sycamore or London plain pulls like a hundred gallons, maybe a thousand gallons a day. So are you talking about uh doing some, you know, wet foot plantings in the basins? In order to help move water or?
Yeah.
Not a vapo, okay.
That's, that's what, so the DEP has, there's, there's specific list of things, but that's exactly what we're talking about. Amended soil. First to try and, and then having those planters in the basin bottom to help suck that water up.
Okay, so a rototiller and willow plants.
Say it again?
Uh so sort of like a rototiller and then willow trees.
Sort of, yeah. So with, with doing under drains, with doing these under drains that we're talking about, we'll just have to be cautious with placement. I don't wanna obviously put trees over top of the under drain, but I think the combination will work very well.
Okay.
Yeah, so then C was the other one.
Right, so as part of the prior design uh or prior review, we had to look at offsite runoff when we did the improvements to pick up. Um and improve the culverts under Green Top Road, predominantly Green Top Road. We ended up picking up a lot of stormwater area that's offsite. I talked to Steve today about it and say, hey, when we did that. Uh we didn't run through our calculations perfectly and I wanna make sure that we break out and say this is offsite. We don't have to reduce offsite flow coming into our site. Uh we are, we're responsible for our site and our runoff and reducing that. He and I agreed, I just have to kinda clarify our calculations a little better. And put it back in front of them. So I believe everything else stormwater wise is will comply.
Okay.
If it's okay, I'd like to stay within comment number ten and go to comment L. So it's ten L. It's about storm sewer piping. This is a waiver that we'd like to request both of the minimum pipe diameter and the RCP requirement. For, for driveway culverts, um we're allowed to use fifteen inch pipe. For stormwater design, however, it's a requirement that's eighteen inch pipe. We'd like to ask that we can use fifteen, wherever. Applicable, wherever it meets the criteria for stormwater runoff for a hundred year, hundred year storm event, we'd like to reduce it down to fifteen inch. Secondarily to that, as opposed to using reinforced concrete pipe, we like to ask to use HDPE pipe. Both, both are generally accepted, but it is in the ordinance and it is something um. We wanted to at least ask, ask the planning commission, ask the township if that's an acceptable waiver request.
These would be for driveway crossings? Would they be for the culverts going over the road?
So the reinforced concrete is universal, I believe, within the ordinance, whether it's driveway or within storm, storm sewer within the site. And to be clear, our stormwater, storm sewer piping within the interior of the site is just associated with the BMPs, the basins. We don't have. Pipe networks everywhere. It's just the outfall pipe. So the reinforced concrete part is everywhere. We'd like to switch to HDPE pipe.
Just within the BMPs?
Uh well, I'd like to switch, I'd like to replace this, the culverts, also the HDPE. If we can, um I'd rather do that. We, we, we use that almost, almost everywhere. Uh it's accepted by Penda and acceptable, acceptable material. We would have to make sure we have a different cover than, than what is spelled out in the ordinance. We have to provide a little more cover over the HCP, but.
Do you have adequate cover on all the pipes uh in the road, Jeremy, with the?
Yeah, I believe we do. I believe, I went through and we sized them all. I believe I have a foot and a half of cover over everything. I'll, I'll double check.
I think you almost would need about two feet uh. Yeah, structurally.
I think the paving spec is with everything is, I forget if it's thirteen or fourteen inches, but that's where I got my foot and a half over HDP. If you need two feet, I can see if that works. If it doesn't, I certainly understand wanna use RCP within the road.
Yeah, I think my experience or at least my memory is that uh I don't think we've ever waived. Um the RCP in roadway or, or you know, other than on lot. And I'm not even positive about on lot, but I think we may have permitted it if it's something like, you know, the piping associated with BMP. Within the, a given lot. Um but I defer to, to Kurt and or Steve on that.
Yeah, and I spoke to Steve. He, he mentioned that on the private lots, um that those requirements have been waived before. Um the issue with the, with the street pipe is obviously concrete would be preferred, but. If there was a waiver, I would, I would say that there should be a caveat in there that they must have adequate cover. Um and in calculating the cover, you can't count the pavement thickness as part of the cover. It's ba- basically just the stone. Uh bedding under the road that you can count as cover.
The guidance, this is Andy. The guidance that Steve gave back in November was that the township is less likely to grant substitution. Of plastic pipe for concrete pipe within a public street.
Right, that's what I was referencing. Tim or John, any thoughts on that one?
I would say the, the roadway uh RCP and then uh you wanna make the request for the HDB. The uh plastic pipe in the. Lots, I mean, that's, that's probably the way to go.
Okay. Is fifteen inch acceptable internally within the site? It is for road crossings. That's in the ordinance. We can do fifteen inch for a culvert crossing of a driveway. It just says that we have to do eighteen inch for basin outfall and, and storm sewer interior of the site. So can we reduce to fifteen inch?
My personal opinion is I think you could do fifteen inch on the, on the BMPs. They're not really basins per se. I don't know if Kurt, you have any opinion or anyone else has one?
No, I think is, you could use less on, on the BMPs and basins.
Okay, and it's not universal. There's some that are still eighteen and some that are twenty four, but there's some that we could do fifteen. That's why we wanted to ask. Everything else, everything else in the letter for us is will comply.
Any questions or comments from the planning commission?
Just John, I have none.
This is Tim.
This is Tim, I have none.
Andy, no.
Alrighty, so Jeremy, at this point, I guess you're gonna come up with some new preliminary plans and get them back into the township?
Unless you guys want to recommend approval, I I I was planning to do that. I saw, I see hands go up, so I figured.
Kurt, do you think we're far enough along that we could actually do a preliminary approval on this? Or do you think we need to wait till we get? All of the calculations and some more details back in?
I would suggest we get the plan revised because there's a lot geometry changes. There's, uh, the widening details and the trail and. Uh, quite a few things that's hope to be ironed out.
Sure.
Yeah, we we intend, so I'm trying to get them back in. Um, so that we can be on the next planning commission meeting. We're trying to hustle these through right now and get this stuff. Cleaned up and clarified pretty quickly.
Alrighty, then I guess I'd be looking for a a motion to table this until next submission.
Let me, may I ask one question? Do we need to ask, do we need to ask a time extension? Um, I guess that's a question for Greg. I I think we're, I think we may have to.
I'm not sure, but you can always grant one. We'll, we'll get in contact with you.
Okay.
If you have to have it turned in before the board of supervisors meeting, then the board will deny the plan.
Okay, and that meeting is in?
It's a week from Wednesday, so.
Okay.
Steve note, Steve's notes mentioned that there was an indefinite extension granted by the applicant.
Oh, okay.
Just looking at that already, so.
Okay.
Jeremy, I just have one quick question. So in the last meeting that we were in, when we talked about, so the i- if we weren't doing sidewalk, we weren't doing curb. There would be a fee in lieu of. And then we talked about if we, if we fix the culverts on the road and we did the road widening. There could be a swap in costs for the improvements that we're doing to the road. For the fees in lieu of if costs were prevented presented for both, if there was a difference, then that's what the fee would be due. Are we still at that point?
Steve and I would be happy to talk to you about that.
Okay.
And my discussion with Steve on that I had, um, was that. You would basically calculate what you'd be required to do and what you're doing. He he was of the same understanding that the fee in lieu of would be on the difference.
That's what I thought we all agreed to the last meeting. I just wanted to bring that up, that's all.
Yeah, that was his understanding. I don't know if that's what the township understood as well.
That's what we do for every subdivision.
Okay. Thank you, Greg.
Alrighty, so I guess we're back to look for a motion.
This is Tim, I'll make said motion.
John, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. We'll see you when you get resubmitted then, gentlemen.
I appreciate it. Thanks. Thanks for all the input today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, guys.
Yeah.
Good night.
And Chris, I will turn the gavel back to you.
All right, thank you, Alex. Appreciate the help. Um, so next item is old business. Um. We have the continuing discussion on the cul-de-sac length issue that we had started way back when. You guys are up for tackling that this evening. We can certainly start acting on it. What's your pleasure?
I'm not opposed to giving it a shot.
Night is young.
Night is young. I'm not. No, I'm up for the challenge for sure. And not that it's a challenge. Um, so yeah, so I don't know how we want to start this discussion. I mean. The, our standard now is eight hundred feet and twelve homes and. Within the last two years, we've seen projects looking for waivers on length and. In a number of homes. Which has. Spawned a lot of discussion. Um. So. You know, my, my personal thoughts on this is. You know, we, we need to have something in place if we're going to consider granting waivers on either length. And or, uh, number of homes. Um, and. As we all know, the the emergency access has been, has been the relief point, uh. For granting, considering granting the waiver. Um, you know, again, my personal thoughts are if we can, if we can get them to commit to a a maintainable. Uh, emergency access, then. We could consider. Lengthening or adding more homes. Um, how we put that into a standard, I don't know. I think that's worthy of discussion.
This is Tim. I don't, I don't know, I wasn't here last month, so I don't know exactly what you guys all talked about, other than what was in the minutes, but. You know, one of the things is that length, uh, I think was discussed previously at a couple of different instances was based on the frontage of the lot for an, uh, for a single family home. Which, that's fine, if that's the case in single family homes, and that's the length we want to make it, it's eight hundred feet. You know, I think that that's reasonable. I think where it came up in the one waiver that we we did was because it was then townhomes on the cul-de-sac. So do we need to come up with a, uh, you know, some kind of delineation between type of home on a cul-de-sac? Or is it just straight out cul-de-sacs?
That's a good question. You know, and another, another point that that sticks with me is, uh, public or private water.
Uh, right.
Water with hydrants is certainly going to provide a lot more safety than than having to bring pump tanks in or set up, uh. Send up ponds within the cul-de-sac area. Um, so I think there's, there's a lot of criteria to consider. Before, for, uh, putting anything pen to paper. Greg, you have any?
I think emergency access is very important if you're going to grant any waivers. That's what I think is the most important thing. And secondly is public water. The more public water, the more safety you have. So is there one size that fits all? I think you're going to have a tough time coming up with a single idea that will fit every property.
Yeah, we could sit here all night and put, you know, caveat this, caveat that. Is it public? Is it private? Is it? Townhomes? Is it single family homes? Is it duplexes? Is it, you know what I mean? So I don't know. Again, the waiver option is there legally, I think, for situations like that, but. I get what John was saying too about, you know, constantly granting waivers, then you put yourself in a certain position with, well, you did it for this guy, how about why not me? You know, that type of thing, favoritism, potential perceived favoritism, whether it is or not. But it, uh, it opens itself up to a lot of different, uh, potential scenarios.
Yeah, that, and that, that, thank you, Tim. And that, that is my point. I, I, I still get very antsy on. Granting, granting waivers. I. I'm less concerned about what the number is and more concerned that we stick with it. So if there's criteria. You know, if there's public water available, it's X number of feet. If it's private water, then it's Y number of feet. An- another thing I think should be taken into consideration is, um, age restricted communities. I'm, I'm less concerned about. Emergency access that I am about emergency exit. Somebody needs to get out and can't get out. You know, maybe a cul-de-sac length for age restricted community should be something shorter, considering that. Elderly people don't walk as fast or as far if they need to get out of someplace within an emergency. So I, I, I think. You know, i- it may be a complicated and convoluted formula, but I think. That if we put our minds to it, it may take quite a while to do it. That we, that we make an attempt to come up with something, but more importantly, that whatever we come up with, we stick with. So that anybody that's designing a project knows ahead of time that this is the rule and. You know, the, the first option is not to ask for a waiver. The first option is. Adhere to the rule, and if the rule's wrong, then we fix it and make it right and make it right for everybody.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a good point. You know, the age thing too is the other thing is, you know, people are buying homes like cul-de-sac. You know, they're, they're adults, right? They know what the situation is. They know what they're buying. They know what they're getting into if it's a, you know. Twelve hundred foot cul-de-sac and they want to buy a house at the end of it. Well, they take, you know, take the responsibility of what comes with that. I mean, I'm not saying to do that. I'm just saying there is some responsibility on the, you know, on the, on the people buying the property too, if the developers could do it. I'm not saying to make these cul-de-sacs, you know, whatever length they want them, but. I, like you said, John, the age does come into it, um, you know, for a couple of different aspects, I think.
Yeah, and that's, that's the point. I mean, buyer beware is.
Yeah. Yep, you got it.
For one observation, after thirty years in real estate, nobody's an adult when they're buying something that costs a quarter million dollars. They're little kids, and this is the first big red zoomy thing that they're going to be buying. But I do think it does make sense to have something that differentiates between. Public water versus well water and then perhaps, you know, some. Ratio between the number of units and the length of the drive. Because if you got more units, you got more stuff that's going to be up in fire. If it's, you know, you're talking about an apartment complex versus somebody's shed. There is a huge difference in that. But I am kind of curious that might be better to just go through, go through and figure out what does Milford, what does Richland, East Rock Hill, Percocie, Roswell, Hilltown. Telford, County of Alfred do, then just quick do a survey of, okay, as we go around the clock for our neighbors, what do they do?
And Steve actually, Steve actually put something like that together. Earlier in this discussion. I don't know if I still have a copy of it, but if I can find it, I'll send it to you. And. The, the results of that was everybody was all over the place. From, you know, having, having no requirement at all to, to some that were even more restrictive than ours.
Yeah, West Rock Hill, West Rock Hill is number fifty-two. There are fifty-two little fifers in. From the Game of Thrones kingdoms throughout Bucks County. Anyone has different rules. You go ten mi-, you go two miles to the side and. Nope, different rules, different standards, care of, but at least somebody's thought of them and just work on. Take what they've thought of and bootstrap from it.
I do have a copy of that, uh, chart. It was dated March fifth, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, he went through, Steve went through, uh, West Rock Hill, East Rock Hill, Nakamix and Plumstead, Hilltown. Springfield, Salisbury, Bedminster, Upper Salkin, Lower Milford, Chester County, PC, and Penda.
Sir, I salute your organizational talents. It would take me a month to find it.
And I, I think Kurt, what I remember from that, it was, we were maybe on the conservative side, but pretty much in the middle of. Everything on that.
Yeah, you were, you're eight hundred feet or twelve dwelling units. Um, five hundred was kind of a common number or twelve dwelling units. Um, amongst quite a few of the townships. Uh, Chester County said one thousand, Lower Milford said one thousand feet. Um, so you're, you were kind of in the middle of the pack there.
Okay, good. So it's not bad, wrong, it just could be better.
Well, again, I'm not sure it, it's bad. I, I, I think it's how we implement it. If, if we're, if we're going to. Continue as we've been doing is. You know, reviewing each project as they come along and making a. Each by each determination whether we're going to approve it or not. I mean, that's, that's the way we've been operating. If, if we want to come up with something that's. More formalized, that's enforced. To a greater degree, that's another approach. That's the approach that I'm suggesting that we take.
Right. So.
Considering the nu-, I'm sorry, considering the number of times this has come up, I think there's some merit to that, John, just because it does seem like almost every project. Someone's trying to do something beyond the ordinance, the way it's currently written.
Well, and, and if, you know, we even had examples of that earlier tonight where. You know, there was a couple of things that came up and some, well, you know, we don't want to do that. We'll just apply for a waiver. It's like. I, I just don't think that's the way government should be.
Well, I think it depends on what, what the waiver request is. I mean, certainly. You know, curb and sidewalk. In a, in a rural area, it's, it's certainly worth waiving, getting the money out of it. Um. The cul-de-sac length is, is a, a whole different animal. I mean, there's, there's certain things that that make sense to waive.
Well, but if we're going to waive them, why don't we get rid of them? You know, if, if we're always going to be waiving the requirement and allow people to put in fifteen inch pipe. Then make the requirement fifteen inch pipe. You know, uh, you know, when, when have we not waived that? You know, it gets to that point where. If the rule doesn't make sense, then get rid of the rule or or make it so that does make sense.
Yeah, I agree with you there, John, because there's a couple of things like the, uh, fee in lieu of recreation for commercial properties. Uh, like for commercial, you know. Projects. I mean, why is a businessman, it's putting the additional in his business, having to give. It, you know, a fee in lieu of to the parks and recs so Johnny can have a playground. I mean, his business has nothing to do with Johnny needing a playground. Now, if you're a developer. You're coming, you're putting twenty homes in and you have no playground there, sure, then that makes sense for parks and recs. But I mean, a businessman doing that, so yeah, I think there's a few things. In the ordinance that should just be seriously looked at and, like you say, maybe just changed.
Well, that's where you, that's where you have to take what I have had is. You look at all, you look at things as an owner. Potential buyer, and you're looking across all townships, and you're looking at everybody's rules. And you realize nobody makes any sense because everybody has different rules. And it's not the rule. It's, well, what makes sense? That's why you have the waiver that, okay, this make. This makes sense for us because, okay, the top half of the township is covered with trees and big rocks, and the lower half of the township is covered with. Farm fields and good soils, and we have to make a distinction between the two and we'll decide it later. Thank you, planning commission, to get a waiver. But that's one of the problems is, you know, you're in. Logical competition with the rules from all the other adjoining townships.
And, and lot size plays into it. Sometimes the topography and natural resources in a township kind of makes something feasible somewhere and and not somewhere else. And that's where I think Greg hit on with. Sometimes hard, like you can write all the rules and try to get everything figured out or, and there's always some kind of exception to that rule. That seems to come into play.
Right. I mean, we have to evaluate every application on a case by case basis and then. Evaluate these requests that are being made to determine, you know, um, whether, you know, they, 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 um. Uh, comply with, with our, with our ordinances. And, and if they don't, then we need to, you know, just. Consider fairly the alternatives, uh, from both sides, public interest, uh, the applicant's interest, and then, and then make a decision. I'm not suggesting, but yeah, but we need to have the base, you know, the, the baseline to make that decision.
Yeah, and I think it's good to have a consensus in mind on what, what's acceptable for the waivers, whether it be paved emergency access or. Higher density units or water service, um, and whether that be a policy decision or actually written into the ordinance. That's another, uh, option.
Yeah, and there's an example with the concrete pins, which you did tonight. We always have neighbors claiming that their pins have been moved by their neighbor. And if you concrete them, you save the argument. So that's something that please don't ever waive. Like concrete pins.
I gotta tell you, Greg, in Providence, I didn't think we got concrete pins.
And that was probably before we stopped waving it. Yeah, I think there's, I think there's a few things we could do right off the bat, especially with the cul-de-sac length, like, uh, you know, uh. Dwelling type, you know, age restricted, public water, you know, it's probably three or four things that we could throw in there right away that would make it a lot more. Um, uniform and and give us more guidance when it comes to emergency access, you know, that sort of thing, uh, that, that gives us, uh, more guidance and. Allows us to be a little bit more stringent when it comes to, uh, different proposals.
I just took a. I'm sorry, go ahead, John.
I was just gonna say, so how do we go about doing that?
Well, I just took a quick shot at it and said, all right, we're starting with eight hundred feet and twelve units for a single family homes. I said, if we go to townhouses. And knock that back to six hundred feet, but give them twenty-four units. Shorter cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac length. But because of the nature of them, give them more units and age restricted, we make it six hundred feet and twelve units. But because of the nature of them, give them more units and age restricted, we make it six hundred feet and twelve units. And then if they're on public water, I'd say townhouses is eight hundred feet and thirty units. Single family homes is one thousand feet, sixteen units. Age restricted, six hundred feet and sixteen units. Basically, in the age restricted, I kept the, um, the length short, but if they had public water, gave them an extra four units. And with the townhouses, gave them an extra of six units and two hundred feet above where we are now if they had public water. And for a regular home, gave them an extra two hundred feet and four units. I don't know that you could get the the sixteen units on a thousand foot of cul-de-sac, given the current requirements for frontage.
Yeah, but that's a good start. I mean, that's a, you know,
Yeah.
Something like that, I think is pretty reasonable. You're extending or shortening lengths depending on, you know, what it is you're dealing with, right?
Right. Like I said, the townhouses, you get more units, we just don't give you as long a distance to put them in.
Right. Yeah, that makes sense.
You're probably not going to see townhouse or age restricted without public water.
Yeah, but at least it gives you some options, right? I mean, it's instead of this shoehorning into an eight hundred foot length, right? Based on some, not arbitrary, but I mean, obviously we know why it's based on that. But I mean, that, that is just one, you know, thing for cul-de-sacs. This at least gives you some options, gives the developer some options, the, the property owner some options and you know, again, people buy it sometimes.
Right.
And it's like, it's easier and clearer if it's, okay, you've got one thousand feet divided by the number of units at the end of the cul-de-sac. If you've got, if you have public water and, sure, okay, it's five hundred feet, four hundred feet divided by the number of units at the end of the cul-de-sac because you have to get people there to put out a fire if it happens. And it can be really clear and pretty simple. But you just have to set down, you know, set down the best number you can, and that's why you grant a waiver if they're really close, but they don't quite match.
I guess the question I have is, is this something that needs to be added to the ordinance? Is this something we can operate under as a general guideline or?
I think like Greg or, uh, what Steve was saying was, you know, that these are the things we need to come up with and try to tackle these low hanging fruit things all at once, right? Like come up with a couple of different, I mean, be it the cul-de-sac length. I think there are some rezoning issues in the P C two out on Old Bethlehem Pike to take a look at, uh, some different properties out there. But I think we come up with these for ordinance changes, right? Wouldn't that be the way to have to go, Kurt?
That certainly is one option, doing an omnibus amendment to kind of address all these, uh, items that are lingering.
I guess what I was asking is if we were to start using some kind of guidelines like this, would that need to be codified prior to actually using them? Or could they be general guidelines that we operate under based on the eight hundred foot and twelve, twelve units?
From, from a reviewer standpoint, I think it would be, and from planning commission standpoint, I think it'd be more helpful to put that kind of, if it was as detailed as what you just mentioned, with all the different thresholds, something like that would be better to publish in an ordinance amendment. So the designers are aware about it, aware of it, so we don't have to explain it to, at the meeting after they already tried the eight hundred feet.
Yes.
Yeah, why don't you take something like that and give it to Steve, let's, or Kurt, I don't care, whoever. Um, you know, run it by him, see what's up, see what they think, you know, if it's, if it's acceptable, if it's legal, right? Um, you know, it makes sense. I mean, and then we take that as the, as the basis and, you know, see if there's any other change you want to make before we put it into, you know, to codify it into the code.
Sure.
Yeah, but it's also, and it's, it's also at your discretion and you can create informal rules of discretion that, okay, this is what the ordinance says and we're going to follow this kind of rule of thumb of, okay, what makes sense, what doesn't make sense.
And are you going to deal with emergency access?
That was my next question.
Chris, may I, uh, post something up here, present something?
Absolutely.
All right. Right there, West Rock Hill Township, you have Aaron Drive, Linden Circle and Mill Creek Road.
That's my house right there.
Actually, Mill Creek is a cul-de-sac that has an emergency access that you can get out. So this, this is not trapped and people here can actually get out and go around. So there is an example of a good emergency access.
I would agree.
What if there's two feet of snow on the ground? Uh, then we move, we move it.
Do you?
Yeah, we do not plow that shut. We actually have a sign there that says that it's emergency access. You may not park there and we do not put the snow there.
But do you plow the two feet of snow that's on the grass there?
We don't, we don't plow it open. It's a, it's a, a thing. But yeah, if it's two feet of snow, then yes, they are stuck. But we would plow it open if there was an emergency. If there's an emergency, we'll plow anything open. State roads, whatever it takes.
So Greg, is that a chip trail? Is that some kind of paver blocks? Is that a paved trail?
Uh, I think it is a paved trail.
It's, it's paved, Alex.
Yeah, it's a paved trail. So people could, if there was a fire here, they could exit and go out. They could exit and go out this way.
It's wide enough for a vehicle.
Wide enough for a vehicle, it's wide enough to give an ambulance in.
Okay.
But here's a good example of an emergency access.
Right.
Yes.
And trail.
And a trail. And so you, you, you get two things at once.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I'm looking for personally, uh, something that's maintainable. We might want to encourage it or demand that it's maintained year round. Something to get emergency vehicle in, to get an emergency vehicle out. You know, if we have, it's, it's, it's almost a loop road at that point.
Would that be a requirement?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
One.
Just on every cul-de-sac or just ones that would exceed?
Anyone that wants to exceed the, the.
Wants to exceed, right?
No, 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 I just don't know. I don't think we should do that. The rules should be the rule. There should not be exceptions in waivers, especially on something like this, which is a safety issue.
But, but John, they're, they're giving an extra access compared to, look at Aaron Drive or Linden Circle. They don't have an extra access. The people on Mill Creek Road have an extra emergency access.
But that shouldn't be an excuse to give a waiver to a rule.
You're extending a walking path too and connecting two different, uh, communities, developments. That is a benefit to the township.
If that cul-de-sac exceeds the length, then the developer should shorten the cul-de-sac in order to meet the requirements.
What if the requirements were written such that providing an alternate access would permit the longer cul-de-sac?
If we're descriptive on what that access entails, then, then yes, that would make sense.
So you write it, if, if it were to, you know, if, if a plant exceeds the stated length, there needs to be an emergency access provided, is what, is that what you're saying?
And spelled out what that really means, yes.
Right.
Or maybe phrase it, only if X, Y and Z are met, would a, a longer cul-de-sac be considered?
So another way of putting it, yes.
Yeah, that would be a good way to put it. And I agree with you, I agree with you, John. I mean, I don't think, you know, it's not our job to sit here and make it profitable for the developers, that's for sure. I mean, that's not our job. So I, I, I agree with you on that.
Yeah, and for the, for this length of cul-de-sac, you need point, two points of emergency exit. One of them can be in an emergency and it become the trail, but we need two points for emergency and for emergency access. It can be unused, but we still need it.
Yes. Good discussion.
Well, I say, I say Alex keeps working on it and keep, comes up with the rest of the verbiage on that.
I second that.
Presents it to Steve and then we'll vote. How's that?
I second that motion.
All right, I'm making notes. I, I know what I'm throwing under the bus.
You're the one who opened your mouth in a first place.
Careful what you wish for there, Alex.
Ultimately, though, we should look to get it into the code to offer further guidance to whomever, you know,
Right.
is looking at this. So, and, and hopefully, uh, you know, uh, eliminate or significantly reduce these requests by, because it's in the code that way.
Yeah, I agree.
I will chip in that I know that the, that some of the big cities, their planning commissions actually have their own regulations and rules and regulations that guide them that they write down. But I'm not sure under the M P C whether that is binding, but you can put in also a little flag going, these are our standards of how we view this, this, this and this. But also does nice see a trail going around the back of a property without having too much of a problem. So you can do it.
Yeah, I think we take this and then, like I said, some of the other things that we're discussing and try to kind of bring them into a, you know, presentation that we can give to change the code all at once for, like I said, the other low hanging fruit.
Yep, but even before you go through an ordinance change, I think planning commissions under the M P C are allowed to have their own rules and regulations. So you can make a sort of a chalkboard rule before you actually set it down in type set print and put that out. But I'll have to check with Mary. But my rec- my recollection is, yeah, you can actually have your guidelines, you know, chalk stamp guidelines of, yeah, this is what we're thinking about and this is why we're thinking it, so that everybody knows. They're not official, but they give people some kind of idea of this is what we're looking for.
Greg, is some, this is, and you can tell me again if this really sounds stupid, but this type of conversation, is this something that would be appropriate for the periodic township newsletter? To let people know what we're up to? Like we're looking at these kinds of things?
Well, anytime that, if you want to put something in the newsletter, the newsletter proof is done and it's, it's off to the printer. But yeah, if you guys want to start doing articles, not only that, but if you want to provide information for the website and do an article, we can put an article on the web, on the website. So anytime that you want to get information out and draft something up, I can get it on the website immediately. The newsletter's done twice a year.
Okay.
Um, but I can include the planning commission on my email chain of, do you want to do an article?
And Facebook and Twitter.
Township has a, has a Twitter account. We do not have Facebook.
Oh, okay then. Uh, sorry, Park Rec. Sorry, holiday house.
I'm thinking maybe what we'd want to do is kind of, uh, get this in a state where Steve and maybe even Mary have looked at it and then say, you know, we're considering this as an alteration as part of a larger change to zoning or to the saldo. We welcome public comment on it and basically have that as an agenda item for a future planning commission meeting.
Is that required?
No, I was just thinking it wouldn't be a bad idea to get municipal input on it, or, you know, resident input.
Yeah, I suppose we could do that.
No, that's good. Just, but just remember, you're the top one percent of zoning geeks in Bucks County.
Yeah, right.
Everybody else, you know, like, what are we talking about?
Right.
Why, the, the rules? How do I, what happened? So you're going to have half of the discussion being, what, what are we talking about? Maybe ten percent is going to be worthwhile or actually focused usually from the developer or homeowner who's gone through this. And probably another five percent from other towns of the field going, oh, this is what we did. But overall, it's good, but don't, but don't be surprised when you get a lot of, what, there are rules? We have to, we have to follow the speed limit? We have to follow the rule? We have to do this? I never knew that.
All right.
I think we put it on a website.
People never read the homeowners association agreement and they can be like, I can't just put up a thirty foot, whatever it is? No, you're kind of sort of stuck with that.
All right. Well, let's move forward. Um, so Alex, are you going to, uh, you going to pen something for Steve to look at?
Yes, I will.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion on a cul-de-sac for now, or you want to wait until we get some input back from engineering after he peruses Alex's handiwork?
I suggest we curb the discussion on cul-de-sacs.
Nice. All right. So let's move forward. Uh, next agenda item in old business was the, uh, comp plan initiatives. Um, we did have some brief discussion at, was it our last meeting or the meeting before? John, you were going to, uh, you're going to go over to the, all the sororities and, and present your plan?
Yeah, so far I've reached out to the Park and Rec committee and I'll be reaching out to the um, conservation committee this week to.
Have you got any, any input back from?
Nothing back yet, no.
With Park and Rec, have you approached?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
How was it received?
I, I sent an email. I haven't talked to Dave yet.
Okay. So is there any, any discussion you want to, you want to share tonight, John?
Uh, nothing else for tonight.
Okay. Well, I, I, why don't you, uh, if you don't mind, get ahold of the, uh, conservation people and hopefully you'll get some feedback and we'll have some discussion, uh, after that.
Yes.
All right. Any other discussion on the comp plan initiatives? Good.
Not for me.
All right. Uh, new business is next on the agenda. I have no new business. Is anybody else?
Before I forget, there was one item, uh, in the, the memo from Steve dated March third, two thousand twenty-two. Um, that we go to item thirteen for Veris Partners LLC land development.
Right.
Um, that application requires action by April eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, so Steve indicated he did speak to the design engineer and they expect to resubmit in a few weeks. Um, however, with that time deadline, um, he, he asked if the planning commission would recommend conditional dot denial unless the extension was received by March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, or supervisors meeting.
Would we need a motion on that or just a general thoughts?
I think we need a motion on that.
Well, then I would motion that we provide for, uh, conditional denial of the versus partners without an extension on the time for that.
Well, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kurt.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And there was nothing else on his, uh, no, nothing else needed attention, right?
No, that was the only item that, uh, needed attention.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, anything else on new business? All right, hearing none, we're going to go to public comment. Uh, I see Cliff Cole has raised his hand. So Cliff, you want to?
Hi, thank you, um, Harold. Even turn on my video so you can actually see who I am. Um, thank you very much for, um, uh, I'm Cliff Cole on Shoe Craft Road, twenty-four forty Shoe Craft Road, where we had plenty of trees coming down and wires and all kinds of stuff last night. Um, I would just like to comment on the Catch Basin road property, um, discussion. I appreciate the, uh, informed discussion. discussion. I appreciate the, uh, informed discussion by the, by the commission. Um, just a couple of comments. You know, I walk along the Horseshoe Trail and in Valley Forge Park and Perkyomen and other places like that. There's lots of trails that go through, you know, near people's property. So, you know, I, I think the trail ought to have some, you know, I, I know that it's not, the true hasn't, the trail hasn't reached fruition yet and, and all that kind of stuff. But I think that easement ought to be given, um, serious consideration and, you know, it, the trail was, the, the trail and the easement for the trail was there before this property, uh, was proposed. So, uh, if a neighbor, if a owner of the house doesn't want to have a trail in their backyard, then don't move into that property. You know, just make it clear and upfront and everything. So, um, anyways, that's, that's my comment there. Um, and also, um, I'm wondering about the, is there a traffic study that's been done on this, uh, for this property? Have you guys completed a traffic study? Is there, there are one that's publicly available for us to see what's, what is, what's going on with that? And I'm just gonna say that, um, in general, you know, as a resident in the relative, you know, general vicinity of that area, I'm not, uh, I don't want the roads widened and improved. We get plenty of traffic. We get plenty of people going way too fast through here. And if you're, if you improve the roads, you're just gonna increase the traffic through here and you're just gonna encourage more of these nut heads to, to come running, you know, come speeding through our, you know, rural township. We don't need that. We don't need that. That's not what, what West Rock Hill was about. So, uh, I think you got too many properties on that, um, parcel. You know, I just, whatever. I think you're just putting too much into there. That's, um,
Two and a half minutes are up.
Okay, just one more comment is that if there's going to be an easement, it ought to be a 50-year easement.
Okay, thank you. All right, who else we have? Hal, you got your hand up?
Uh, yes. Uh, just a quick note for the record, uh, did have the call from the Clay Heckler Group that they were going over and I got the copy of their spring 2021 discussion with other neighbors and residents. So just so you know that that's still there, still coming along. What occurs to me after looking at the property records is there is now at least an interesting issue that they might be coming in from Ridge Road with water and sewer rather than try to come across from the Boyan Diner because now water and sewer is coming into Ridge Road. And I did notice that they also have a subdivisible piece of property on the north side of Holiday House Road. So just a heads up that, okay, it looks like this is coming back up again. We'll have to think about it and look through it.
Good, thank you. All right, I see someone called unknown has raised a hand. I don't know who this is. So whoever has their hand up, go ahead and start commenting.
It's Christina Shelley.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are you there, Christine?
Sorry, I was having technical difficulties. Thank you. Um, I, Christine Shelley, Whaleand Road. Um, right around the corner from the proposed, um, development on Green Top there. So I agree with, um, what Cliff had to say. I'm not sure, I really don't even know if we can widen the road down there. I heard talk of widening Green Top and Catch Basin. But you need to, um, traverse Whaleand Road, whether you're coming off of Rich Hill or coming off of Old Bethel Pike. And I don't know how, um, widening those two roads cannot include a discussion about what happens to Whaleand Road. Um, and I don't even know, I know the people that live across the street from that development, that proposed site. And I just don't know if there's enough road there to widen. You're talking about a shoulder. Um, has there been a traffic study done? I'd like, we taught, that was discussed, um, in an earlier meeting. And I don't know if, if that's been done, but I, I think it needs to be done. Um, and I also agree about this discussion that we're having about these waivers. Why are we bending over backwards for developers who are trying to just bleed every penny out of these projects so that they can make money as much money as they can out of them? Why don't they just work within the ordinances and the requirements? And if it means they build one or two less homes on a site rather than what they're proposing, um, they wouldn't have to ask for waivers if they, um, built a few less, um, homes. Also, um, the tree buffers, I'm not sure that fee in lieu of, of trees is a good thing. We have, um, we're still suffering from the Emerald Ash beetle and we've lost so many trees back here. I think trees are really essential. Um, you know, it, it, and it all ties in, like saying that, that, that storm water management is going to be completely contained in, in a one site. All of these properties, whether we want to think that they are connected or not. Okay, sorry, we, we are all connected back here. So what happens down there affects my property. And my grandmother who lived here for a hundred years ago, she told us 15 years ago that the, the ground is getting wetter back here. It's never been this wet. So I think we really need to, um, seriously consider these issues. Thank you for your time and your work on these projects. Good night.
Greg, do we have anyone else?
I do not see anyone else.
All right. Seeing there's no more public comment, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
This is Andy. I'll make a motion.
John, a second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries, meeting is adjourned. Thank you everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good night.